Well, she's got.
With the rolling monuments?
She's got a sin.
BMW?
No, she traded that BMW off for a Ford, um.
Explorer?
Hedge.
Hedge.
All of our houses with the hedge.
Yeah, she loves it. And it's nicer than that, it's nicer than that BMW. Has more back belt and whistle.
Yeah, I go reclining passenger seats.
Yeah, and she's got heating and cooling.
And a puncture will be cheaper to repair than BMW.
Yes, well, in her car.
The whole change.
Yeah. That's the whole change would be cheaper.
Yeah, we're out there this morning for a break.
Okay, good deal. I'll let her know.
So I'm working the home road, so somebody else is getting mad because I'm not working on theirs.
That's the way it is.
You see her chewing on my butt, or somebody else chewing on my butt.
Has she called you now?
Oh, she said a couple things. Shame. Yeah, but he contacted me, says, "You told Charlotte that the state was responsible." I said, "The state has responsibility down at the far end where it comes off of Red Top Road." I understand, and then I told her that the contractor had done that for her, but we haven't done that for her. You know, she got confused.
She's just not sure about mine, right? Yeah, they'll be a bit.
We'll love her, hold her, hug her. Take care of her.
That's what we want to do.
Yeah, so she can't miss, she won't like niggas here. Let me get her.
Is that what you did there?
All right, you still calling for a name, and she said what we do.
So you three, Sarah? Okay.
That's funny.
Is she the one you know, Dave? Let him know.
I do look at my watch, because I have one hugger. It makes me even madder.
I don't see how that happens, though, your mother.
Well, she got.
Did she get cranky, she got old?
Cranky, when she got to be, you know, when she got all that daddy face.
Working as a therapist there, though?
Yeah.
It's been a while since we've got Charlie up here, so we're old school. They're right.
So what?
I said, "We got you up here today, so we're back in old school." We don't have no camera.
I thought you said you tried to pick up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's his old reference? Harry Gage in that old school.
Well, we don't have no camera, that's what I'm saying.
Did that work?
It worked.
Like, transparency. Transparency is a big deal nowadays, aren't we? What do we have?
Okay, I'll call this meeting's order, Young County Commissioner's Court sitting in a call meeting, uh, Monday, July fifteen, twenty nineteen. It is nine thirty-five AM. I make note that seating was supposed to be later for time required, but all members of the court are present. It's convenient, fam, and that's the information, layer B, it's a layer of the commissioner's office.
Let us pray. Most thanks to Heavenly Father, thank you for the day, thank you for this opportunity, sir. Please, uh, help those who are struggling now, trying to understand the grief that they're dealing with, the loss of loved ones. Please aid and comfort them with your graciousness. Thank you so much for the, uh, opportunity to live in such a great community and a great state. Thank you for the many blessings that you give us each and every day. Christ made you pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Out of number three, public comments now, presentations. Have any things to offer on agendas, invite them over anything.
Other than activity on the square on August third for the Cars and Stars show. They had quite a casting call out of Fort Belknap this last weekend. They got some movie produced in it. Did they work on the movie while they were out there?
Yeah.
Who would that be?
Do you have any more details about that, too?
Showdown on the Brazos.
The name of the movie?
Western movie. Jeff Foster's the director, he's an only high school graduate, twenty-ten. They're filming in three major talking scenes, and then, uh, they were doing some V-World footage there as well. And I know friends at Fort Belknap and the Hatters were also helping out with some background.
Period costumes and stuff such as that?
Yes.
Is it, did you say showdown?
Showdown on the Brazos.
I'm gonna go across to the cemetery, cause it looks awful.
But she tried to mow the other day. She like lost the mower.
We'll leave it there.
Yeah, we didn't do that. There's some bad too.
I didn't want to get a grater out there, just the same.
Can't get a grater inside the cemetery?
Oh.
Everybody do that?
The Cars and Stars is August the third.
August third, Saturday, August third.
Out of number four. Consider county clerk minutes of previous meeting, that will be in July the eighth. Twenty nineteen, are there any additions to the lease in there? Second. Out of motion, Dr. Michigan. While the second permission for Rogers to accept the minutes as presented, all in favor? Any in public? Out of number five, consider director's financial report, do you have anything to say there?
Wait, no, it does.
I'll ask you today. Out of number six, consider all budgeted minutes without.
I don't have any budget I have to say, but I always have vouchers. A few already, my share is out, so I put some in, but. I'll need to go in. Total is forty-eight thousand, four eighty-three, twenty-four. And out of the general is twelve thousand, seven sixty-two fifty. And there are no non speaking.
I'd say. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers. Three, two, one, favor, last, taking, all in favor?
You got to hold it under that, no, like.
I believe, uh, under eight thousand, Dr. Michigan, just to discuss with the city. Estimate J.J. Oilfield Electric Incorporated for justice and free technology updates, I might correct, sir, for free and possibilities, whether it be partial or regular.
Yes, uh, for one thing, what we're gonna do for J.J., uh, J.J. do, we're moving some plugs. And these, as we all know, are tinder block walls or brick walls. Removing plugs and across the room, moving some up, he's pulling cable. Uh, we're gonna, what I'd like to do and what they need down there is put a little bigger TV on the wall that we can use, we can use for court. When they have, you know, uh, when they're doing the court, like, nice force to issue, everybody tried to huddle around Joanne's little monitor to see, instead of being able to put it up where, you know, the jurors can see. To see, want to see it properly. Uh, this would be paid for out of the, uh, technology, so it is technology. Uh, there, I think, forty?
Forty-three, six ninety-seven, and eighty-five cents.
Forty-three dollars, so, uh, the TV and all of that, and we're only about five fifty, we're putting a fifty-five inch. Uh, and, uh, that way, they can, you know, they'll be able to see that, see what's going. It has come up several times, but this time they really, really have a hard time with it. So, that can be fixed. And this wire needs to be done, so this just gave me an opportunity, just to fix it all at once.
Just can we run all the surfaces of the wall? Or inside?
Part of it inside the wall. They're gonna draw, so they got the, August the fifteenth, they're gonna be gone for some training, and so, that's when we're gonna drill. We worked it all out schedule-wise and everything. It's gonna come out at the same, yes, it'll. J.B. take off.
It's got forty-three thousand dollars.
Forty-three thousand.
What do we use that money for?
J.B. Technology.
I maybe we spend this money.
I was expecting that, I went out.
Yeah, I hate having that kind of money parked up. Used for the bills, yeah.
But it's, you know, a small fee they collect off.
Bills up, then.
But they're good to anything they need, uh, technology-wise, to work with me on it.
Well, I'm with, with this project, this. I noticed that the, however, is that estimate only, so it's possible it might be a little taller or less?
Give or take, if they run into anything. But it, you know, it's not gonna be very much one way or the other.
And I move to approve the project.
Motion by, uh, second by Commissioner Wiley to approve, uh, the updates necessary projected on, uh, technology, uh, in a mount, in a mount. Uh, so, uh, we'll try it there.
Well, I need the TV needs to be aired on.
Sixteen hundred?
Yeah, I need it.
Working off the complete two thousand.
That might be sacred.
Now, what did you say?
Free, I said, "Project, let us know how much it's gonna be."
Besides, you're approving the thousand.
Approve the project in J.B.'s office, not two sixteen hundred. Two thousand. Two thousand gives a little leeway. Forty-three thousand?
Yeah. Both besides, second by Riley, to allow the upgrade, not two sixty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm not saying, this is a nice way for me to get some of the electrical upgraded and pay for it through J.B. Technology.
Exactly.
And not, you know, cause there, you know, a lot of our electricals had issues, so this was a good use. I'm a devil. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir.
Other than I don't let that break a new type carrier last week. Middle of the week, my deal was that, we'll see about seven weeks. And they indicated the party for our system here, for the NBL, the base, they were expecting, but it's about any time, essentially, they got. On the, on their location, they were scheduled to be nine, uh, different. They, they had all parts given up, uh, last week. Out of number seven, discuss the Senator Interlevel Agreement for provision of equipment and consumables. This is from the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, and, uh, that's seven, what, that's office. She's gonna tell us all about it.
That's just an agreement, saying they're gonna give us the equipment, we're gonna take it.
And they're on charges to get one of these.
We don't want to do.
Is that one of them?
This is what I've got. The ones that get us, one and all being here, and then. Mine is extra.
So the state's paying for all of the work?
And see, it used to be fifteen hundred dollars, but they went down to three fifty.
When's the last time we did one? I got, like, you got a nice. I don't know about every one. I'm in this office, like.
But when I first came in, since they're on, you know, like, the chat, it's not, they're on.
Here they've been, I think, like, Timmy got two or three stories, like, he's got the resolution. Where? Somewhere up here.
So Nancy, what does it do? What, what does it do?
It's just that our RTS machine, you know, probably.
Okay, it's, it's a dedicated machine that works for.
You said, I mean. Would have to have it early.
She can't place out.
This is if county desires.
No, we can't.
Additional RTS workstation beyond what is allocated by the department. So they just allocate three.
But we've got four.
We're allocating four.
I didn't mind, but I guess we have to pay.
Yeah, so that's the fifth. If we have five, four paid for.
Uh, we got three, we got four that the county, that the state gives us, and that's one.
And one of those allocated is up in.
No, but, yeah, uh-huh. The one that we pay for is in my office.
Right, there's one in Holly and three more years that the state pays for. And then the one that we're paying for.
If county desires for additional RTS workstation beyond what is allocated, so we've got one beyond what is allocated. Workstation may be leased to county, spent in department. The cost of leasing basic RTS workstation, three hundred fifty dollars per year, plus eleven dollars per year, for a, an e-learning account, for a total annual lease of three sixty-one. If a cable drop is needed for a workstation, that'd cost another hundred, hundred and eighty dollars. If workstations that are leased by the county are based on full service, they're the office. That's a FDS, and, uh, anyway, like, then there's additional annual cost of four thousand six hundred dollars. For service taken inside for a year to cover the T-one line service cost. So, we're doing that?
Sorry, I mean, we don't need an additional one. What we've got. No, so we don't need, we don't need another.
Which contract will last for six years, determine that's after six years. Sheriff? We're not paying anything on a T-one line in the state with, for the Texas Sessors Office, are we?
Think so. State should do it all? Yeah.
For the forty-two sixty years, Chris.
On anything other than, uh, I tell them anything that they allocate, even if it's not allocated.
I guess that's in addition to what we already have?
Well, something like that allocated is four, and we have five. So we're paying for one, evidently.
But we've been paying for that since how long?
Ever.
Ever, forever? So we've had it around a long time?
We've had it, because I.
Forty-two. It's an age figure.
I needed another one to go, you know. You're telling girls to lunch, you don't have to work out of that workstation. That's not good, when you have to work out of somebody else's work. Everybody needs to work out of their own workstation, because if there's a problem or something.
All of them has work protected.
Nancy, is that the RTS one? RTS, is that something that we pay fifteen? It was fifteen hundred and we're three. And margin down to three, three fifty or something. Yeah, see, we had. And I think they're, I think they wait a while before they see that they're playing, it's long. Yeah.
Post enter into interlocal agreement. Texas Department of Motor Vehicles or RTS Systems. Motion by, uh, through the second by Commissioner Wiley to enter into such interlocal agreement by means of resolution with the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles for equipment, consumables, as defined in the agreement. All in favor?
Will that resolution be a separate, uh? Will the resolution be a separate exhibit?
Uh, well, it.
Or is all included in this one?
It'll all be the same time, uh, the resolution will be attached to agreement and an exhibit to say.
I might get it to exhibit even for the resolution, okay?
Out of number eight, discuss, consider physical year twenty-twenty memorandum agreement, uh, memo, uh, M.O.A. Between counties, Young County and Helen Fairby Center for twenty-seven, four seventy-five, that's the same thing that we've been, uh, we've been paying for quite a number of years. However, uh, albeit in the motion itself, I recommend that it goes on this form being due. The cause of Division six oh one that was passed through, uh, is going to cost county for, uh, million evaluations of suspected inmates that may come into our county, their system.
That's.
Of additional costs for that. I think if we can, or if I'm gonna try to negotiate with Helen Fairby to include this in the contract under these numbers.
You're good, cause that's got the potential of being a fairly large unfunded man they got, that they've done. How do you not recommend someone for one of those evaluations? Cause if you don't, and they end up having a problem, then you got yourself held in some sort of liability litigation for that. So it sounds to me like most, all prisoners are eligible for that kind of treatment, and we've got to pay for it, and no reimbursement.
Well, uh, there are any screen, everybody that comes in there, and one of them actually sees either mailer or, or, or sale. We'll get a notification of questions that have been answered off of that. About initial evaluation, indicating maybe it was part, maybe, I think, a little bit.
But in light of the Sandra Land Act, you're gonna be very cautious and conservative on that, you know?
Well, well, I have, uh, calling the magistrates, I'm, I have before, uh, more than once, but not very big time. Called her and Helen Fairby in specifically to evaluate.
I think, Johnny, you're trying to put that in the contract, right?
I would hear that. I think we, I hope we can get that done, uh, including some provision of that in the contract that we've been paying for. And like, that's the same, there's three different requirements, and I have two of them coming same time, and one of them in some other town. That's the total that we've been contracting for another year. So I, I'll admit that we pushed on that, taken it for a while. Okay?
No, I'm sorry, guys, what was your most, your most, I'm sorry.
Out of number eight.
I think we'll.
Make the motion to, uh, take the action at this time, put it on.
Okay.
Need to free.
Yes, or a time element on that, I mean?
Well, probably, we need to have in place about, I hope, yeah, or, without, without, but either whatever. Uh, but not any necessary, necessary urgency, I don't think, there. Okay, all in favor of that?
Those seconded, huh?
Me.
Uh, we'll keep it in. Out of number nine, consider road crossing permit for Belknap Water Corporation to, uh, color board crossroad.
It's, uh, I'm discussing various, I'm only approve that. For the record, the change of gentleman, sorry. He didn't do a talk with that.
Yeah. There's a motion, uh, signed, second by Commissioner Wiley to approve, uh, road crossing permit, uh, as requested by Belknap Water on crossroad. All in favor? You know, I think, whenever I saw that, I, I don't call it a same crossroad, where is that?
It's between Flat Rock Road and Finals Road. Short cut, it's used quite a bit. David lets me know what it needs to serve.
Good thought, huh?
Good thought.
Out of number ten, do I need a right for this guy right here? We'll get the next person to favor it. Isaac, Texas Sessors, you like her, is dear physician McCoy.
Okay, I've got an employee that's on a retire December this year, and I've got another employee that's coming to retire March next year, twenty. And I'm asking if I can hire early, a month early, so that that employee can play my job.
You're telling me can't retire?
Well.
Are you planning on replacing both positions?
I've got to. Cause I'll be gone. Before twenty twenty.
Inexperienced Texas Sessors, collect.
So you want to hire?
How about? What, what number is she?
Four nine nine.
Or time, or temporary, temporary thing that fire, so they can train fire to that. For employment day.
What I have trouble with that, they, I really need to marry her every day, so they can, because if you're off two or three days, you forget.
About that, yeah, but.
If I could just.
How long are you talking about it?
Well, just, Carolyn's gonna retire December, okay, I was hoping to hire somebody in December, so she could train that employee. That's just not gonna retire till March, I was thinking somebody in February, so she could turn.
You know, about thirty days.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's what?
Four weeks.
That would be for two people, because if, if we went ahead and if she hired them for that month, you know, we have a sixty-day waiting period, so we're not gonna be paying any insurance on it for sixty days.
However.
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 There is a however.
There will be some additional cost, but if we do that, if we don't do it in part-time or temporary manner, then we, we could, you know, might retroactive, I guess, the, um, metal.
And they have to be full time employees, she has been able to put them in.
She what?
Marshall had to be able to put them in as a full time employee. To have, you know, the date they're hired, they have to wait for sixty days. And the date they're hired as a full time person is what it is.
How long can you fast fund a temporary?
Sixty days.
Sixty days?
I mean, if you, if it's per, you know, how do you do permanent, part time, where you go ahead and start doing the, the retirement and everything, you know? Not any different, like if she, if she were to hire them for the full time, then she could start it with. Because the max she can pay the part time is twelve dollars an hour, and I noticed I divided that, and I don't know what you start them at. But right now, the full salary is like fifteen something an hour. So, I mean, just look at the difference there. Go ahead, we could go ahead and set them up on the retirement. Either way. But you want them, you're going to have them here every, every day.
When they're here every day, it's like, and who knows, I might not.
Every day, thirty days. Well, eighty, thirty days, I think, probably twenty four weeks.
So you said sixty six hundred dollars is what it costs?
It'd be for, for two people, yes, for two people, full time and no insurance.
Right.
Would be paid yet.
Right.
But that would be your FICA, your Fit FICA, your retirement.
Right.
And then, um. The salary, and I, and like I said, I bear that home, and you may not start them out there, so it may, it'll be probably a little bit less because you have. It's almost the same amount, it's going to cost me.
If you want to put them in that part time line, but we don't want to establish two of this one.
No, no, and that's what I, and that's what I told Nancy, and I hadn't talked to Ann about it, but I'm sure she agreed, you know, just. If we got that money, put it in that part time line, let her pay them out of that until they go to the positions that are leaving. But, you know, if you.
It's just a little squat, but they're part time, full time or your part time.
You got a temporary line there.
Yeah.
Do that.
What goes in that temporary line? I want to. Just do it in the temporary, I don't, I don't mind.
Yeah, and then convert them to full time at the end of the training.
Want it one time before the one retired and one another time. For the second retired.
Unless they're spaced out a little bit.
You know, a lot of times this happens and, and like I said, if they have vacation on the goods, we've got to pay them off.
Can you hire a temp during family medical or MMLA?
But I can understand why she wants to do that, because what if one of the girls falls sick and now she's really short and then she's got a person there that's trying to learn, you're like, oh.
And that's the main deal is.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm very good at, at that temporary.
Okay.
That's what the temporary, I, I was open temporary.
So I'll do the sixty, and then it might be a little bit different, we'll talk about salary and you'll, yeah, kind of tell me what you're looking at starting. And then some of that'll be going into the FICA and the retirement line.
A little extra, a little extra.
Yeah.
Just all eight days, each one temporary.
Yeah, that's what she's saying is thirty.
Thirty days?
I'm sorry, I've had ear surgery.
And I've been for bad ear, I think thirty days is correct, you know, have them in there temporary like that. Full time but a temporary.
One more.
Two pay periods.
I know, please, our volume, please, sir.
Yeah.
Holidays.
Holidays.
Okay. Where do they file for that? And temporary status. Legally, legally, I don't know.
I was going to look at yours. Oh, I, I can't.
You need, you need this, which, but.
Here's what she, here you go. We talked about that, we talked about that RTS going down.
So if you're hiring, you get people for.
Nancy, if she could, I can't hardly bend over.
Nancy, when is the thirty days to start?
Well, for retirement.
Thirty, thirty days prior to his retirement, okay, gotcha.
Um, and, and her, uh, membership dues have gone out a little bit, um. Gone to a hundred and seventy five instead of a hundred and twenty five.
Play those lobbyists.
We want to get.
Membership dues are going up by the lobbying draft.
I'm wrong.
You say one seventy five?
All the membership dues, one seventy five. You know, probably, and, and how to think about, no, like, I think this time we had.
The deep therapy rest.
We just need to pay fifty dollars for each.
My brother, I'm going to play with this, this one myself.
Does any reform?
Uh, six, seven.
Somebody else along with you?
For another daughter, take care of all your bonds that you have, unless somebody has it.
Yeah, well, I'll be gone.
She'll make a redo of somebody else.
I'm going to get Christie, I said, I'll have to see what I'm in this, Carolyn, that's fine. I'll, I'll fix somebody, Christie wants, so she can start.
Yeah.
I'll look at that and see if there's some.
Nancy, did they start charging less than those computers a couple of years back?
They just swapped this year.
Okay, that's the three sixty one.
There's always been fifty.
Yeah, drop. Cool, let's run them by.
We might pull ours with the enough on the line.
I think so, I'll look and see on her notaries, um, because she's fixing to add Christie as a notary and then hers will be dropped. I know, and it depends on if that run out this year.
And then she might hire somebody else, I don't know.
That'd be, would they give a notary stamp?
What did you pay for in twenty seventeen, that was three thousand dollars, that are recurring, something we need to look out for?
For that out.
On the bonds?
Oh, yeah, that's her. That's that new thing that she had to do to get her bonded out properly.
Bonded state, um, state.
Got there to bond.
So a, a new person would have to have that?
Or?
A new TAC.
Yes.
The new, the new TAC probably will, you'll have to. Probably do the.
In the next year.
I guess from TSL. Or just kind of build my position for the week.
We can cross that bridge too, we can cross that bridge.
Probably, like you, like.
Is that a motion by the judge to approve Nancy's request?
Uh, yeah, no.
Oh, okay. I'm rushing, you're sorry.
Yeah. This is just a presentation by the department.
Oh, she said. Tell Mike, I appreciate his work.
It does feel good.
Six, six, I'll break, I'll break that, we'll talk about salary and I will go break that in.
Temporary, I guess sixty days.
Yeah, it'll be thirty days on one, thirty days on the other. On March one.
Well, February, right, because she said the first one.
Yeah, she's leaving March, so it'd be.
February, right, right, right.
Don't have specified date in March.
So.
Don't have specified date in March.
Uh, I'll leave it in March.
In the March, like, play roles.
She got vacation accumulated?
Well.
Are you going to be without her longer than her?
Yeah, it's, it's all up there, I bet you, thanks for all the dedication, I just, I just.
So you're actually putting them out when and where it's spent a little bit.
Right.
Yeah.
Sounds good, man.
I'm sure, the fluid situation.
I notice, come in there. Get them ready to pour it out.
There you go.
Can you handle? I do. And then I'll have to go behind and send it out first. I've done this. Are you clear? It doesn't, it doesn't shade, does it? Wow, this new kid loves to. He took, took to it like that, he loves it.
Well, if, if we don't have to put them in there, like I say, you put the money in that temporary line, it's safe. That way it won't miss the truth, because you're full. Have employees, put it in there, and they can go ahead and start their countdown, where six, three.
I think one of them. Both of them could be on January, like, or.
I love the. And he, he. He went, he went.
So you're not, you're making, even about putting in the temporary line, you're not making a full time employee, it's just a part time employee?
No, I don't like that they, the necessity to.
They're just paying them twelve dollars an hour and not start the.
Temporary.
We can start the retirement, I think, because they're going to be permanent.
You have to, shoot, for thirty hours.
No, you want to start that one on January one. Hold on. March.
So the max you can pay them would be twelve dollars an hour?
Or stay, that's what I would think.
Did you all pay them that much, did you find out how good they were in?
We, we labeled them. We labeled them better. Minimal, or maximum rate.
Yeah, yeah.
On part times, they may already increase. Maximal part of the, of the, the minimal being where it would not auto increase the maximum.
It seems like everybody goes to the maximum though. Well.
We need, we need to drop the RPU's down to three sixty one, right?
Three?
Yeah, down to three sixty one.
Three sixty five?
What was it last year?
We paid the three sixty one.
Yeah, three sixty one.
Such an odd.
Somebody, somebody applying. Applying for a full time position in. I'm going to have to be appropriate. Whatever. Maximum, probably our maximum.
Twelve dollars. They just don't have any benefits for thirty days and then start them off the, um, if you move them into the line.
Thirty days, well, no, they're working off.
Should be picking, she's young.
Nancy, do you plan on starting them at the salary of the person that's retired? A tenured experience employee, they can get the same wage that they worked their lifetime to give?
I don't think they need to do that, I think they need to work up to it.
Yeah, also, most offices.
I agree. I agree.
So it's not going to cost you that much team, then, because if you start them out, it's.
Well, but like I say, the employees that leave, if they have vacation, we have to pay them on.
Oh, that's right.
So that beats into that line.
That kind of gives you a little, a little help.
But it could also leave early though, can't they use those days?
Yeah, they want it to. So they can leave early and use those, they're the, same my retirement dates here, if I want to use those two weeks. Vacation and benefits, same difference.
A lot of people do it. You're paying them and they're not there.
You're just not, yeah, you're just not.
Budgets under one cap, right?
Is there something in the office furniture?
Yeah.
Yes, she was going to, weren't you getting new chairs or desks or something?
Uh, no, I asked them, they wanted, I mean, the desk they got, I bought it apart, but they never could say I want the one it's. Looked new TAC.
There you go.
So you want.
Good manager.
Will be my problem. Every day, what you, all even more.
Needs to be done this year, to take those budgets off.
One thirty thousand dollars, if they had a new one chair, they'd be up five hundred dollars.
Well, you should say, the two thousand would be up there.
That's like after the bunch where they were going.
They have in here, they, they go and replace them later this year, so.
Maybe chairs, if that's something.
Well, I think they've got new chair, I think the chairs will, cause this is the desk that I'm following for.
Well, you have to play it, why you meant that to them?
Yeah. Saying nothing? You've never been in that office? There's a bunch in there.
You put the paper in the front, what's it?
They have a move.
The power flow away, they go with furniture.
I said, they have a move.
They get it done this way.
I like the way they set up now.
Just kind of listen what we're going to get, if we don't like it.
I say, you know? You're the worst.
Might be, build one of those, uh, room in the bed or room, up on there, and they just got a work counter.
So if, if they have the two thousand, this year, we'll just leave a little bit in there for.
That's right, so maybe five hundred dollars.
For Canada, they're just, yeah.
Five hundred.
Top right there.
Jeremy, you want that? Didn't we?
So we'll get it to five hundred for next year, but.
You can get that done this year, this will rest work out.
So we'll get it to five hundred for next year, but.
You can get that done this year, this will rest work out.
You don't ever hold your peace?
Yeah, they are never.
For another new year, at least.
Slowly.
What else?
At part time, we make it twenty five, three twenty, if we do the sixty six.
Well, I'm going to put it in that temporary line that doesn't have anything.
Okay.
I'll just put it in there except for, you know, the back, and I'll put it in the right line, but the other part I'll put in there.
Play them, you play them on the part time deal, part time, that's going to. On the, on the, on the.
I would hit that little way.
We'll write it down.
PT slash.
It should.
Okay. Yeah. Did you hire like a young scout? Did you hire a younger gentleman?
I did.
I saw him driving. I think they, I don't know if it's your fault.
John Harden Jr.
Mine looks like a two year old.
Well, see.
Animal want to rip things. On a piece of paper, just one line or something.
She's doing it all day and it's more than.
Yeah, get it right.
I may, maybe last week.
On the education line, you think you need any more in that if the new PAs will be there?
I wouldn't think so, I think that should be.
Double coverage?
Could go to two, maybe three conferences every year.
Careful, we'll point down September one or October.
Got one in July, got one in, if you have one in the.
You type, you type anybody in the news?
Linda.
Kind of sent me in the email of that.
Well, it's good, Nancy, I have Carolyn, I have Carolyn.
Thank you. And that being, so Chris will be the only one in there? An experienced, is that?
I said you don't like somebody else, that you don't like thing.
I won't be going. My thirty first, twenty twenty, I'm gone.
Now watch out.
Care for what you say?
What quarter's that, right up there?
I don't care. I don't care.
I think, how many years?
Eight forty.
Forty years and one buck. That's, that's all, that's, that's not the end of her term?
Huh.
No.
See, they're her term.
Just letting you know.
Only years.
So do I need to put all that stuff in there in the minutes about the chairs, and on the desk, and all that, just?
No.
We're talking about last year's discussion for.
Yeah, we're talking about that.
Cool. But we do need something, a motion on that, the handles, temporary employees.
Talking about. What you're talking about?
Approve the temporary employees, we can do a motion for that.
No, that's a temporary thing.
Yeah.
Right down there. There, just twenty one, sixty first, so sixty six, something way to the west.
Oh. Yeah, because since y'all made it part time, it won't, you know, that's what I said, I'll lose it out.
Got it, I was putting, I guess you were correct.
So how did that serve?
I give myself a cushion there in case it's a big one. Budget adjustments, and that's pursuit of the.
Yeah, the salary, like.
Twenty twenty. Twenty nine, I think twenty, buddy.
I'll, I'll put the back in.
Right, no, you got to.
Okay, that. So, yeah, we'll go back to the last, we're going to do. Right, I'm going to change, I'm going to change that, because I told her, you know, we'll do it at twelve dollars an hour. Refill, I'll refill that, and then we'll take the back out of that, put it in the back.
For my family, there's a call.
Thank you.
Still got vacation, still don't know. About to move. I'm like, we're in Pearl. What?
You don't know, I'm just going to make it through March the twentieth.
I have.
She may take a vacation, I believe, in February. Hello, Linda Ben.
Benny Ben, no, it's Linda Ben.
Oh, what, she was actually, you have Harvard, two thousand. That's a better name. Carolyn's been here around off sixteen, seventeen.
You got some experience up there.
Walk out the doors.
They want to enjoy life today, huh?
Yeah.
They're playing.
Well, that is, it's a happy feeling what you're doing. Have a good time.
He needs to go buy an airplane and a racehorse.
You're right.
I heard that.
Oh, yes.
She's got to see him make every sporting event she can find, man. She's a sportster.
Brian gifted. Yeah. Break, well, break.
Break.
Fifteen minutes, I work eight years. We'll on break.
Nathan doesn't, there's an inter- inter- tiny newspaper we put out this last time.
Thank you.
Mr. Montgomery, you surprised?
I'd share.
Some, uh, reading here.
Silent, fifteen, how many years is on sixty?
Oh, about sixty six.
Sixty six?
It's a thing, it's a rough town. We had to edit some of his stuff.
I bet so.
Whenever you get ready.
Has he told you about the edits?
No, he approved the edits, he undertakes.
Oh, he approved it, okay.